I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four zero.
Okay, I will go ahead and call the city council meetings order. I've asked Councilmember Bryant to lead us in order to clear.
You'll bow your heads with me. Our heavenly Father, we just come to you and thank you and praise you for the many, many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you, dear Lord, for this opportunity that we have as a city and as a county to get together as a group to discuss the needs of our wonderful area, for our wonderful city and our wonderful county. We ask you to guide and direct us, dear Lord, to keep us with open minds and open hearts and do nothing but much that that is great for our county and for our city. Guide and direct us, be with us. Thank you so much for all your wonderful blessings, in Christ's name. Amen.
I'd like to say thank you to the judge for your hospitality.
Thank you for calling this meeting.
Yes. You know, it's, there are those in our community that say we don't communicate and that we don't work together. But as you look through the documents that were furnished to council, you realize just how much we do work together. Whether it be fire, whether it be the jail, whether it be so many other things. And this is just an opportunity, I think, that we really need to open up the lines of communication. Because as we all know, we're in unprecedented times. Twenty years ago, they said the oil field is dead, that the Permian will never come back. Well, I think they may be wrong. We're seeing record numbers in oil production and gas production. We all know that we're busting at seams in the county and in the city. Looking at things we not, we never have to look at. The infrastructure need that we have, the infrastructure need the county has. And I think it's just a great opportunity to open the communication lines, to work together on projects when we can. And so I just wanted to welcome everybody here and thank you for the opportunity.
You know, I'd like to just thank those that are sitting out there, that are here, that take pride in their city and their community. And a lot of you are city employees, county employees, and those that are just live within our communities. And I just appreciate each and every one of you for being here. To kind of echo the mayor. Those that sat in these positions before us as leaders, made decisions and made long-term plans. And in those plans, they never really dreamed that we would have the infrastructure problems that we're having today in our city and our county. I truly believe that in the next thirty to thirty-five years, your Interstate twenty will look like Interstate thirty-five. We will be trying to figure out where we're going to put an airport on the south side of Odessa because it's going to end up being a distribution center for cargo and freight. We will need to make room for extra highways, state roads, county roads, city roads. And one day, when we look up, Midland and Odessa is just going to be grown together, just like it is between Dallas and Fort Worth. And those that are sitting at this table have an opportunity to plan for that future. So that when we're gone, all of us will be sitting on a nice fluffy cloud up in heaven and will be high-fiving, every one of us. And that's my goal, and that's the goal of everyone at this table.
Any comments from council?
None yet.
We put two things on the discussion and it was just to cover everything. I know there had been discussion as far as inter-local agreements. Looking back, the agreements were signed back in two thousand and one.
Just a little while ago.
Little while ago.
And things are the same.
And things have changed dramatically.
I was here.
You were here.
Yeah. Yeah, but you have a few less white hairs than I had.
I think, I think Dale was here.
And I was over there.
Dale was here, but he was on the other side of the fence, where it was greener.
You know, Dusty sent a letter over and Michael sent a reply, and I think it's obviously something we need to look at. I don't think it can be a short process, I think it's gonna have to be a long process. Because if you look through it, just the scope of everything that's covered. And, you know, just this suggestion that was posed to me, and I'll just throw it out, is to put maybe two council members with two commissioners and start going through that process. Now, some have said that's a long document for two people to work on. Maybe you want to have two committees, just to work on that, because we have to keep in mind the Open Meeting Act. And there can't be three commissioners in the same room, and we can't have more than four. So, you know, I'll just throw that out and let everybody discuss it.
Well, Mayor, that's a great idea, and, you know, I think two and two can handle it, and we'll just delegate, because that's pretty much how I work. You know, because there's areas on these inter-local agreements that I know nothing about, but there is managers and directors here within the county that do. And so we will direct those individuals to handle that inter-local agreement, other individuals to handle that inter-local agreement, and bring all the information back to us. And we'll bring it together to the two and two, and we'll make a formal presentation to this group here.
I just had a question on these inter-local. The one that was entered into the master agreement on February twenty-second, two thousand and one, that has some changes, but then it encompasses a lot of prior addendums, right?
Yes, ma'am.
On different areas. So, one thing that I think should come out of this is some way to, those addendums, most of those contracts can be, they can be voided with some sort of notice. And it seems like that there will be times when one of these agreements doesn't work, but the rest of it does. You know, I don't think this is an all or nothing sort of thing. And so, instead of having one agreement that encompasses everything, I'm just curious if we shouldn't have different agreements for different services. So as one of them becomes outdated, or you call, or we call and say, hey, this is costing us way more, let's relook at this. It doesn't seem so daunting as looking at nine different, nine or ten different contracts. But I don't, I don't know if that's possible, or if it has to be done. Well, it must not have to be done under one master service contract, because we pulled in a whole bunch of addendums. But I just think some of these contracts are still better for today than others. It's not like one is, like it's all great or it's all bad, so.
Well, that's how we're gonna have to attack it, and we're gonna have to attack it individually. And then we'll bring it to the board through council, and Dale advises, obviously, which is best, and I think you're on the right track. I think that if we handle them individually, it'd be easier to modify or manipulate or update, I guess would be, that's what's not happened. There's not been any update. There's been a lot of changes.
And some of the agreements are not even appropriate and needed any longer.
Right.
So, when you get right down to it, there's probably only, I'm gonna guess that out of all of the agreements, and this is all the agreements that I could find. So, I mean, it's way more than this, so.
That's because this should be twice as thick it's missing, except for that page.
So, in reviewing it, there's probably maybe about five areas that really need to be covered, instead of this twenty-five that was covered in two thousand and one. So, it looks like it's gonna be really hard and cumbersome, but when you really got to get down to it, it's the same basic ingredients that you need to make a cake. You've just gotta have those ingredients in it, and then we're done. Whether we put it into one agreement, or if we make five separate agreements, you know, that can be determined down the road. But I think that's where we're at. And I do agree and like the idea that we put together a committee on the city's side and on the county's side, and then let us decide whether we want to, like Commissioner Shelton said, then bring in each department to help us to tell us. I mean, one of the agreements is in here is a trailer. There's an agreement in here for a trailer. A trailer.
Yes.
Okay? Probably don't need that agreement anymore.
No, I think they would.
And then maybe we do.
But you said that trailer was.
You know, and I'm thinking that trailer, if it was back in oh-one, I'm not even sure it has a floor in it. You know, I'm not even sure it has four wheels on it.
You could rent it for six thousand a month, right?
Yeah.
We're still paying on it.
But it's a stop trailer. I mean, you know what I mean? So, I mean, when you're looking at, you're like, really, we got a trailer? Doesn't have four wheels, doesn't need brake, I mean, what does it look like, does anybody use it? You know, so those are the things I think that we have to go through. And I've been tackling this for probably eight months, going through it and highlighting and making notes and doing research. So, that's how I found out about the trailer, that it doesn't have wheels.
And part of this, we need only an annual review. Is this still good for us, is it still needed, do we need to update, do we need to just leave it alone? But, you know, just shelving, it's obviously not the right thing to do, and that's what's happening.
Several of these call for an annual review and true.
Oh, it's not. I would say whatever we decide, can we fast-track it and put deadlines on it, so we can get something accomplished, instead of us having to meet next year talking about.
What we didn't accomplish in twelve months?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
That's all I, that's all I would like to see.
So, on your side, Mayor, who? Who?
It's like at school, when people start looking at you, you go hmm.
Who is that gonna be? Now, granted, I am gonna tell you this, there can only be two on our side, right? Which I think I have a solution to that, to where there could be three of us, because there could be two commissioners, and then there could also be another person. That could be a county person that could be involved. So, we could go up to three people. So, there's.
As long as they're not commissioners.
As long as that third is not a commissioner. See, I've been, I've been a thinking machine for the last year.
I think we would have, we would have to also.
Yeah, so then. Yeah, so you could do three as well, so there'd be three on your side, three on our side, and peace out, we're done, right?
Not everybody at the same time.
I'm interested in it.
There's one.
There's one.
I'll do it. I'll help out.
Councilmember Bryant?
I nominate Dale.
Well, I was gonna tell you. I will do it, because obviously I've got a lot of time already invested in it that will speed our process along. And as much as I'd like for you or Dale to be on it, I think the person really to my left, who said that he was here in oh-one.
He's already doing the same stuff.
Is the one that really didn't really ought to just in the middle of this, because he opened up his mouth.
I think he just got nominated.
Senior person, so that's what I think. So, I'm gonna wait for him, I'm gonna wait for him to volunteer.
Look like he just did, look at that smile.
That's what he is for being the senior, and he did this in oh-one, so he already knows probably more than what I do.
And I think regardless of the nominees for the committee, the input from the rest of us is just as important.
Just as important.
And matters as much more. I think that this is just a coordinating group, that the cooperation we have from everybody is the main thing.
Yeah, I kinda like what Malcolm said, now I can sit back and say, y'all got that done yet?
Norma, can you get all the information?
Yes. And then the third person from the county, I think it will help us in speeding the process up, because it's all gonna have to go to these final people to get approval. And I'm gonna make sure I'm behind this poll, is I think, I think it ought to be our county attorney on our side.
Yeah, they do.
So, I need, if one of the commissioners will make that.
I'll make a motion that we nominate esteemed Greg Simmons, the judge, and Dusty Allen.
Because each one of these, there's some reason.
He made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four zero.
Okay. And council cannot vote, because this is just a discussion item on our agenda. So we will put that on the next agenda and get that approved. So, and I put the courthouse on there just to, unfortunately, we never can sit down and talk as a group. Y'all are a very valued part of downtown, and I think I can say from the city's side, we'd like to see you stay downtown. But we don't know where y'all are on courthouse. You hear things from people, and, you know, the gossip mills are always going. But we would welcome the opportunity to use existing committees, I believe we have set up, I believe it's Malcolm, myself, and Dewey. I don't know, since Dewey's gonna be on that one, maybe Peggy, to start hashing down to details, to see if that's somewhere where something that y'all want to do. But we're here to help. Downtown is going well and going quickly. We're very, very blessed to have the economy we have, plus have the convention center. Look at ways the city could use available funds to help. But get it down to a number where people can actually say, okay, this is where we're at. And, because contractors are really good at saying, well, we think, but, and we just want to offer our services. This is something y'all want to continue to move forward with, to look at, working out some of that stuff. Looking at land, I mean, there sure have to be some land acquisitions. Texas Street can be abandoned, we have talked to TexDOT. If you reduce the size of the TexDOT road, they want to make sure you keep the capacity where it is. And we can't reduce grant because of the capacity issue. And so at that time, grant was going to be reduced, and Texas would take over, or the West Loop, we've talked about both of them. But that is something that's kind of on the shelf now. But that's what I want to come, is there anything else, council, would like to?
I think, I think it's really important that we can have some small group conversations, and we can come back with some specifics about, this is what the city could do, this is what we financially can do, this is how maybe we could do it, and people from the county saying, this is what we need, this is what we would like to do. I mean, I think, I think that the community is waiting for this. They, I think they got kind of pumped up, you know, when you made your presentation. And I think for this bond issue to pass, if that's what you ended up doing for the courthouse, no matter what the location, if it's downtown or if it's out by the jail, it's gotta be a well-thought-out, you know, we are very intelligent, interested citizens. And in the past, it's been, well, we could do this over here, or it might cost this, but I think we need to come up with some real specifics. And I would think that a group working together and really understanding what the county needs and understanding what the city can do to be a part in that, would be really important, to come back with something to present to both groups, that you could either accept or not. But at least it would get us off-center, that you all, the county, saying, I don't know what the city's willing to do, and the city saying, I don't know what they need us to do. So, let's get past that, let's figure out what we can do and what we can contribute. Because always in the downtown development process, and I've been very interested and actively involved in that, it's always been the feeling that the county courthouse is an important, integral anchor to downtown. So if we can help make that happen, I think we are very motivated to do that. If we can't, we can all look at each other and say, well, we really tried, and that's just not the best option.
Just tell us what y'all need from us.
A new courthouse. He asked.
Even if it's five years down the road, at least we can start like previous councils and commissioners have done, to get the OA, I know, just to get the OA to start moving some of that, you know, and that kind of gives us.
And we need to understand your appetite for this, you know, is this still something that we need to be working on? We feel like it is, even like the mayor says, if it's a law, if it's further down the road, a commitment from us would help you all to make your plans for what could be done.
And I want to ask, because I've read the article in the paper where, since the prisoners are no longer in the courthouse, it's helped to resolve some of the plumbing issues, which made it not quite a front burner project, is that, was that accurate?
It's an accurate statement.
So, are y'all, I mean, are y'all?
Is it a major priority, I think, to the Commissioners' Court today? I don't, I'm gonna tell you it's an important issue, but is it the most important issue right now? No. I mean, for me, it's not, and it's not for me, because that we have an addition to a jail that is fixing to open. And the county took in twenty-five million dollars of debt to add on to that jail. And right now, we owe it to the citizens to be able to find employees for that addition. And that is, that is where we are. Now, you know, we, our budget is basically what your sales tax is, that you get in. So, we have to take our budget and make it stretch as far as we can make it stretch. And right now, our emphasis are on the county needs that the people told us during townhouse meetings that they wanted. And that was law enforcement, it was illegal dumping, and it was roads.
And that's good.
And so those issues are what I think is important to the county's side. We have to be able to give the people that live in the county those things that they need.
And I think that's excellent, and that does kind of give us some direction also, to where this may not be the time to be talking courthouse.
It might not be.
And if it's not, I think we need to say it before a lot of time is spent, a lot of energy is spent, just to say, well, this is really not important to us.
Sure.
I mean, we have to get through a budget, and I mean, we worked very, very hard getting a sales tax passed in the county, and that assisted districting. And those individuals, those voters, I mean, how many times do you actually see people vote for a tax increase? But they voted for a tax increase because they understand that that is the only mechanism that we will have in our coming up budget to be able to give them the needs that they so desperately need. So how in the world could you, anyone in their bright mind, think that we could put a courthouse, number one? I'm just not that selfish.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
I'm not, I'm just not that selfish, I'm not gonna do that right off of that, we have to get through this budget cycle.
That's all.
Well, that's great, we thought there was an urgency. When you had the meeting in Odessa College to present alternatives, we were startled and thought, we really need to get in, we really need to put forth our best effort to keep them. If what you're saying now is that's just on the back burner and it's not even an issue, we felt like we were causing you problems by not stepping up and saying what we would do. It sounds like it's not even a priority now. I felt like that you needed to understand what it was we could do.
I think a courthouse is a priority.
Yes.
It is a priority. The juvenile center on the north side of town, that's a priority. You know, paving, getting those roads fixed are an issue. I mean, there are a lot of issues. And I think sometimes what we, what we sometimes get boggled down in is, is we have needs and we have wants.
We've had that same discussion.
Okay? I mean, I want a lot of things, but I can't afford them, but I need these things.
We're in the same place, so if you're releasing us for building an abstinence, we got the same problem.
I mean, that's it, I mean, we need a new courthouse, I want a new courthouse, but there are some other needs that set, that are, I think the people, the constituents, the people that we are accountable to, they have needs, not wants, they need a road fix, they need law enforcement to be more present. West Odessa needs water. I mean, they need to be able to live and survive. And so we have to be able to give them the needs that they need. And, I mean, commissioners, speak up, am I speaking out of turn? I mean, I mean, that's.
Well, it's been, with my limited cooking experience, when you said something on the back burner, it's still cooking.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And so it's still back there, it's still simmering, it's still something that we need, and we're gonna get to it. And of course, when somebody comes forth and throws more wood in the fire, it cooks quicker, okay? So we appreciate anything that y'all can offer us. And again, it's like matching funds, you know, it makes us, you get some appropriate matching funding, you kind of move things around to different burners. But the judge is absolutely correct with the jail. We have got to complete that project and fully staff it before we can take on another project. And we're coming to her first budget, we do have some.
That's my second budget.
Your second, but some tax increases. First budget with money. First budget with money, we hope. And so, so we're hoping to take care of those immediate needs that we know that we can tackle, and the courthouse is a big.
You know, I think the, one of the most important things that was said before we started the meeting is that we're going through unprecedented times. And shame on us if we don't think about the future. I do know we have things in front of us, that's blocking and tackling, that's the things you gotta do every day that are in front of us. We gotta equip the jail, that's a part of the operations within this county and the city, but we've also gotta look for the future for our citizens. Shame on us if we don't, and so I think that planning needs to be a part of it. And the dialogue, if we can just start the dialogue of, we got this, you got that, we'll trade you for a dollar, that type of things, we can move forward and help our citizens. But we got to think of that future too.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah, and I would think, I mean, certainly there's, I mean, when we say we're not in a, we don't anticipate issuing debt this year to do this, but I think the ramp-up and discussions need to be taking place all along. And so, I'm not opposed to still having a joint committee talking about how to make this work.
You know, this whole thing started, if you'll recall, when we were looking at the future needs of our city as far as the building. We house in closets and everything else, so that's still not out of the question, it just became that this was not an immediate need, if you remember Malcolm when we had the discussions. So it still could be something in the future we could look at as a joint deal, because our need hadn't diminished. You know, we're still adding people, we're still have limited amount of space. You lose that function of, when you have four or five different places that your employees are, you lose that efficiency that we can look at. So again, we owe the citizens of our county and our city at least to look at that, explore it, see what can happen. You know, that's that, things of need that are not gonna change.
Oh, absolutely, and the future planning, planning for the future, we need to know what each other's planning. I mean, if you look at fifty-six-three, for example, you know, I mean, that's a prime example. So if we were somehow involved in the long-term planning of the county and the city together, holy cow, I mean, we could stop stepping on toes and work together and.
Save money.
Save money, get a whole lot more done. We're wasting a lot of money, because.
Yeah, we are.
Cooperation's a bad word.
Communicate.
We don't communicate.
And y'all are doing things that negatively impact us and vice versa.
Y'all may have something we need, you know, we don't know that until we start talking.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Fifty-six, Fifty-second, and the money that was put up by ODC is a great way that we've been able to leverage the cooperation between after-county and the city to get the overpasses where you need it to get. You know, you put money in on the light, it gets done, because TexDOT takes four years before they can go to the restroom to get the funding. And so we were able to get that funding pushed up. And we understand, because we are looking at long-term plans now on sewer, wastewater, water, roads, because we're like you, you look at this monster in front of you, where you see growth in this part of the city with water lines that aren't. Because we're like you, you look at this monster in front of you, you see growth in this part of the city with water lines that aren't adequate. Same thing with sewer. Then you look at the road problem. If we don't budget it out, it's going to be hard to do anything. You know, you need to take the low hanging fruit first and then move on, and that's what we're in the process of doing. We fully understand. And we just wanted to open it up because a lot of times the way we all communicate is through the paper, and that's not necessarily always the best venue. I'd rather sit across and say, okay, this is what we're thinking about, and we move forward that way.
As far as the courthouse goes?
I can't make a decision on when we need to do the courthouse until we look at this year's budget. And we figure out how much sales tax we're truly going to get, and we start allocating the things that we have to fix this year. Some of our roads are dangerous, but the courthouse is also a dangerous place. It's, it's, you go to the jury selection room, it's, it's dangerous. It, it is a need, in my opinion, but it's, it's down with this.
Well, just it, but it would seem that it's still, before it can be positioned any place on the list, there need to be ideas of what, of how it could happen and what the dollar amounts could be.
Absolutely, but you, you know, the other thing that, that, um, that I, that I want to make sure everybody really focuses on is that in, in twenty thirty, the population of Ector County will be close to a half a million people. Midland will be past a half a million people. Well, as you discuss what we're going to do as a courthouse, we're mandated to have additional county court at law courtrooms, municipal courtrooms, district, district judges. So the, the presentation that's made is too little for the future. We have to make sure we have enough property and the ability for expansion. So we can't just be taking up one little block. We have to take up lots of land. So it, it will take a lot of us together on the same page for growth for that population to be able to adequately serve the people. And those are things that you have to look at long-term.
Can we give ourselves deadlines to come up with this?
You know, you weren't in, on anything. You just want to call us on the deadline. You're worse than, 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 we're going to have this baby in nine months. Let me count the days.
We, we know how long it takes to bake a cake. We know how long it takes to bake a turkey. But it seems like we talk about this stuff, but we don't put deadlines and timelines on it so we can actually see something get done.
So how long do you think it should take?
I'd like to, I, I don't know. Uh, I'd like to scratch off the bucket list as we go to getting this stuff done is what I'd say. I'm not saying we can't get it, but it seems like we've been here before, do we, right? And we've talked about this before, but nothing has moved forward.
The dialogue's got to continue. You know, we all have our day-to-day functions. We all have our budgets. But we got a, population's going to double by twenty thirty. I think we better talk about it today, you know? And, uh, uh, again, your day-to-day stuff's not going to disappear. That's our responsibilities. Those are things we got to deal with day-to-day. So we also got to deal with tomorrow. And so I'd say our dialogue needs to start and continue and work hard at trying to do something to bring to our people.
Are you kidding me?
Well, the previous committee was.
You. He's doing you.
Yeah, and then, so Eddie was on there.
Eckert was on there.
Eckert was.
Eckert was on there.
Okay.
So it was Eddie, Eckert.
That's it.
That was it. So I guess Eddie and I can still do it.
I can get off the other committee if somebody wanted to sit on it. I mean, I at least started this two years ago, so I feel like I need to carry this somewhat through.
I can do that. I'll switch with you. I want to be a work on the courthouse, but I'll work on the interloper.
We, we started this about two years ago, so let's keep the dialogue going and see where we can get moving to. Again, we don't know what the right answer is. Let's just research it and where we do have something that fits everybody.
Well, we have a census coming up, twenty twenty. That'll give us an idea of, uh, initially at that point, how big our courthouse needs to be. Or until the next census. I think that's going to be our biggest obstacle is to make sure that we have the people necessary to make sure we get a, a good act.
You know, there may be land available. Who knows? I mean, there's a lot of things that are changing every day in our lives around here. So, um, we just figure out what's best for everybody and go from there.
And I think with both of those committees, with those serving on, there still needs to be updates because.
We can put it on briefing.
Right, if you put it on briefings or something so that we know, there may be something that, I know that some land that somebody's looking for. You know, if we, if we don't bring it out and bring everybody to the table somehow, we're going to miss something that may be very valuable.
I agree.
Good point.
You know, pretty much after every meeting, there, there needs to be notes or briefings sent out.
Absolutely.
So, so along that we met and what we discussed, and somebody reads that and has a thought and their ideal, blast it.
Right.
So are we going to just sit? How do we do that for openly? I mean, how do we, because that seems to be an issue. I mean, how do we get, uh, they can't really send out an email. It has to come to our meetings, right, to be discussed. Isn't that right? I mean, that committee can't just communicate with the, with the whole city council and the whole county commission without.
Well, I, I think if you wanted to, to have kind of an institutionalized method of sharing the results of the last meeting, whatever the last meeting was. I think if you give Dusty and me a little while, we can bring you a combined suggestions and you can pick the way you'd like to.
Because it's just an informational.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we can email all of us.
And you're not taking action on it. It's just information.
You just, not everybody can respond.
What if it's sensitive information?
Such as a, a lot or something that may be a light on our water.
No, I don't know about that.
I think we can, we can. We can use Eddie's expertise and he can disguise it.
Yeah, right.
So, so Dusty and Gary could come up with a process that's susceptible.
Are we going to look at having quarterly meetings, joint meetings? Or what, where are we? I mean, this isn't enough.
You know what, what I'd like to see out of a quarterly meeting is, um, future, future plans for other things like the judge mentioned. You know, we've got a juvenile center that's, that's being overcrowded and, uh, we've got road issues, y'all have road issues. You know, where are we going? What's our next area of, of attack? You know, that would be something that quarterly we could, we could discuss. I think that would be beneficial to us.
There's a lot of crossover things. Uh, you know, fire, there's a lot of things that maybe it's something in West Odessa that.
Absolutely.
You know, we can look at to help out with both, both sides.
Well, you know, and trash.
Yes, absolutely.
That's, that's, that's something West Odessa really needs help with and.
Well, y'all seem to be doing a pretty good job.
Good job on catching the people.
Y'all are doing a great job on y'all's avenue of, of policing that. Maybe, maybe we can learn something from y'all, or maybe we can get your help from y'all.
I love crime stalkers.
I love me some crime stalkers.
Hard to deny it when they get a picture of you.
It's still just an ever-growing problem. We need a solution.
The unprecedented times we're going through.
Absolutely.
We got to be through unprecedented times of figuring out how to solution it.
I do want to throw kudos to our, our management staffs that are working together behind the scenes that, that, uh, you know, like our public works guys, working with your, uh, your guys and, and stuff, you know? There's still some, some areas of concern of, uh, say the roads that y'all have annexed in. Where do we, where's the demarcation point? Where do we take over not only with maintenance, but with signage as well? And, you know, and that's just something that I told, uh, to David that, hey, we would discuss and y'all get together and we'll come up with a map showing here's the demarcation points. This is y'all's, this is ours. Here we go. And, and just on, and not just the new stuff you just got, but all of it, you know? And then any, any future annexations or anything like that, um, that, I mean, this fifty-six just pops into my head because we had plans for that and y'all had plans for that and neither one of us knew. So, uh, I think that that's what would really be beneficial coming out of these meetings and we're not duplicating services and.
We can send them copies of the long-range plans that we finished.
Sure, absolutely.
So when we have annexation on our agenda, do we, I mean, at the same time or prior to that, should we be sending that to the county to say?
I think if it's an industrial agreement and something like that, that's something we discussed. You know, if it's somewhere annexing, I think the attorneys better be at least talking and saying, hey.
Seems like they should be talking to each other.
Gary and I talked about that one day, and I think they were making some, uh, changes in their protocols on, uh, starting to notify the county in advance of what, what had been proposed.
Just so you know, they, they have recently started giving us notice that this property's being considered for annexation.
So, and, and I think that's, that's key because, because if, by the time we see it in the newspaper, we don't want to show up at y'all's meeting and say, what are we doing? Because then we look even dumber than we are.
So do we have the protocol in place now that, that you're, they're seeing it with enough time?
Okay.
Good. Because that seems like an easy fix to.
I'm taking it all in. Did you answer your question? Yes, we, we are making sure that we're getting them the appropriate information.
Okay, so that all, everything that encompasses the loop will be annexed sooner or later. But what you said about the development of things and spreading out and a half million people here.
Yeah, there is, I mean, it's.
It would be in our best interest to start now.
All I can say is brace yourself because it's coming.
Get ahead of it.
I mean, every industry, every.
Crisis, basically.
Person I talk to, I mean, it is, it is, it is coming, so, um.
You can see it with the pipeline development and everything that's going on. You could, you could really see it. Anybody with a couple of cents, I guess you could say, would understand the jobs, people, you know, and everything else that comes with it. So we're in a good, we're in a good position.
What's going to happen is the, the city three are going to get together, the county three are going to get together, and then the six of us are going to get together. And then, and then what we can do is then we'll can have this again and present it all.
And that's what I'm talking about. Do we need to have a timeline for this so it kind of forces us?
It just moves us along. It moves us down the road instead of staying in one spot.
He wants to know when we're going to score the touchdown.
There you go.
Go for the extra.
Yeah. We're trying to score the touchdown.
We're going to have quarterly meetings. We can have an updated quarterly meeting. And I'll go ahead and work with Norma and have, start coming up with ideas of when those meetings could be, that we can block it off.
It would at least be my suggestion, though, that all those groups meet separately, that y'all be talking about the same three or four ordinances because you're going to waste your time just to get there. Y'all be talking about five and six, we be talking about one and two.
I'm almost saying they meet together collectively first and then.
Yeah.
Then work independently.
I do too.
But I'm not on that committee.
No, but you sure didn't want to nominate somebody first.
That was my way of saying I don't want on that committee.
Well, that concludes the two items that we have. I mean, if there's anything else we can discuss.
Your honor.
Oh, my gosh.
With regard to the interlocal agreement, I don't think you can vote on it now if the city that they couldn't vote on it. But I would request y'all consider suspending any and all payments under those agreements until a new agreement has been introduced.
So do that now?
I, y'all, I don't think y'all can based on the order of our, our language, but I just want to give you heads up to let the city know that that's something that I'm going to ask y'all to consider.
Okay, thank you.
So, can we talk about that?
We can talk about that.
I, I would, you know, I'd hope that that would push us to get together quicker and get a resolution because we're losing money. I say losing money, we're losing a check that comes, whatever it might be. So I'm, you know, I'm not saying that everything is in perfect order as it is, but until we do get in perfect order, I'd say let's continue with our current situation until we get to that point. Maybe that will speed us, speed the group up.
There you go.
There's a timeline right there. When money's involved, it always gets to be a.
There you go.
So we can meet tomorrow.
Well, we've been doing it like this way since two thousand and one.
Right.
When was that, two thousand and one?
I could, I could commit to trying to get on this right away because it's important to budgets and.
Is, is this open for public comment on, it's an unarrogated meeting, so I'm not used to it. Can somebody make a comment on that? Dusty?
I don't know what you want to comment on, Jim.
I just want to comment on the different, different things that I see with the community and the program and give a couple of suggestions.
We good?
Thank you.
Well, it depends on what he's going to talk about, if it, if it has to be interlocal agreement or the courthouse. That's all it can be about. So it can't be anything else but.
Some of those interlocal agreements relate to public health and the services we provide, right? Uh, exchange for fire and EMS, and, and that's what I remember.
Yeah.
I want to talk about that. We provide, I'm with the Ector County Health Department, the director with the, I've been there twenty-five years, and we provide a lot of services to the citizens of Odessa. As a matter of fact, most of our clientele are the citizens of Odessa. And we've been incurring drastic budget reductions because the county has been incurring that in the last few years. We provide vaccinations, we provide sexually transmitted disease examinations, tuberculosis. These are things that I can guarantee you, there's been talk about maybe some of the medical providers taking some of this on. I don't think they will. I think with the change in population and the change in the structure that the county is going through, my recommendation is that maybe the city consider taking on public health as they have more financial resources like Emira Midland, uh, that has the health department under their budget and purview rather than just do away with public health. To give you an example, we, we actually monitor, when I, when I ask somebody what does public health do, they say, well, that's the place that inspects restaurants and gives vaccinations. We monitor the community to make sure that if there's high cases of any communicable disease, that we try to circumvent it and stop it at the lowest level before it becomes an epidemic. I don't want to see that be diminished, and I guarantee you the hospitals, Texas Tech is not at a level that they can take over some of the duties that we've done. So I want to, I want your consideration on that as a group, that you take that into account and consider that maybe it's time that the health department be made a part of the city rather than the county. There's no law that says it has to be a county health department. That's just the way it was established back in nineteen forty-one when the county judge decided to ask the state for the charter to have a local health department. Can I answer any questions for you?
Is your, is your budget, your, your budget and expenditures are those published monthly online?
Uh, no, but I, I do have a year, I have a yearly report that has the budget and, and you can see, uh, we usually update it every year. I think the last one is a twenty eighteen report that's on our website that you can have, or I can make that available to you as well.
Yes.
You can see the decrease from the county side of a million two hundred thousand in twenty sixteen to eight hundred and some thousand this year.
It's on the website, you said?
Yes. It's under www.co.ector.tx.us, and then there's county offices that you can click on, and health department is one of them. Yes, www.co, as in county, dot ector, E-C-T-R.
Co, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just co, and then ector, A-E-C-T-O-R, dot T-X, dot U-S. And then we'll link it to the comments. Yes.
Gina, I don't know for you or for Dusty, would there be an issue, a jurisdictional issue, uh, issue with that being outside of the city limits on some of your enforcement functions?
Uh, that I know of, there's not. The health department in Midland does conduct septic system inspections for the county. Uh, that I know of, there's not. Uh, the health department in Midland does conduct septic system inspections for the county. Uh, they just do, do an interlocal agreement like we have now, I believe, with the city, us providing services with the city. Now, there are some restrictions in the fee structures that we can charge. That you're restricted in the county to certain fees where in the city, uh, they can, uh, provide their own codes and they can have whatever fees that the public will accept. It's a different structure on fees.
Would it be an issue, um, though enforcement, like, um, on issuing?
No, because you have, like Gino said, you have an interlocal agreement where the county agrees that y'all will conduct certain services on our behalf.
Okay.
I've always felt that the code enforcement part of the city would really, I think, collaborate. And we always have, that they call us when it's a public health issue, that it's mice, rodents, things like that, sewage on the ground. But being in the same type area, I think they would collaborate much better. And it, it worked real good on the environmental side, swimming pools, septic system and restaurant inspections.
Do you know just
I think it would be a good fit.
Do you know just off the top of your head what your annual budget has been?
Started twenty sixteen, uh, at a million two hundred thousand. And we've reduced down to about eight hundred and sixty thousand. That's the county, the general budget. Then we've received approximately three hundred and sixty thousand in grants to provide, uh, some services from, uh, the Texas Department of State Health Services. They provide us grants.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? I'll be happy, you've given me the opportunity, I better take it. I'll be happy to answer anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Gino.
So I think, you know, obviously that's something that can be talked about here is interlocal. Gino, solo?
Absolutely.
So, Gino, see
Solo? Solo. That's a nice name.
He's Italian. He said Italiano.
Anything else from council?
We need to move to adjourn?
Well, it's
They did. We did. Do I need a motion to adjourn?
Can we set a meeting date or does that have to be done?
Uh, we probably should.
Do you really want the Not that we're going to hold this too?
I reckon I have Norma. Make the connections.
So it's, everybody's here with their calendars. I just need to at least get a Kennedy date.
Okay, so it's
June, July, August.
For the, for the two committees.
All right, for the whole thing or for committees?
I was thinking for the, all three committees, but
Who else is with you two on that? Interlocal.
Detra.
Tom. Oh, Tom. There we go.
I'll put dude on interlocal, you on courthouse.
They, they
Swap. We swap. Only swap.
Yeah, we swap.
That's good for a forehand.
We, you tell me the date and we'll see if we work it. Next week, the Wednesday or Thursday?
Nope.
Monday?
You're on both, I guess. Are you on both? I have nothing to do.
Yeah.
Next Monday?
Seventeen?
After that, no.
Okay, so maybe it's not best to set a meeting date back.
Have to be the week of the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that's, that's better for me too.
Is the week of the twenty-fourth better for you?
For the courthouse.
For the courthouse.
For the courthouse.
Okay, so twenty-fourth's good for me. Twenty-fourth's good for you, Dewey?
What time?
Ten o'clock.
Got it.
On the twenty-fourth, that's Monday. Where?
Monday the twenty-fourth, ten o'clock.
Is there one more on your end? Dewey, who else is
It's Malcolm.
Is that good for you?
You pointed me out? Wow. No, I'm writing it down. Ten A M. is fine. Twenty-fourth of June?
Yes, sir.
No question.
So interlocal, can we do next week? Because I'm gone the week of the twenty-fourth. I'll be out by next week.
I'm already booked.
How long are you gone? When will you be back?
I'll be back Monday, July first.
That's going to be weird because we're stuck in the middle.
That's okay. I'll be here July first. Okay? Dusty?
I will not be here the first. I'll be here the second.
Second week.
I can do it the second.
What about the following?
Following week? You're going to be gone, huh?
I was hoping to be gone Sunday, the forty-third, but I don't know.
That's okay. So we
Maybe we get a couple of dates and we can just
That's okay. We can
Get some more available.
The week after that, we have our budget meetings.
I know, I'm with you.
Do y'all want to try the first?
Yeah.
First is
We, we'll do that as, well, he said the second.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
We can try the second.
And if you do, end up having a late one.
Yeah.
So you'll be done by ten thirty? There's, there's some background work that's going to have to be done on it anyway for the meetings to be
The second is a Tuesday, right?
Yeah, that's going to be a pretty quick, I would think.
Eleven?
You'll be done by ten thirty, but
And then we the courthouse meeting at ten thirty because I have court scheduled. Ten thirty-third. Dewey?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Don't be laughing at me. We're in a public place.
Ten thirty, yes, ma'am.
Ten thirty for the courthouse. I have court.
And giving the right
I, I just want to add to that. I have court at ten. Thank you, darling.
Ten A M.
Ten thirty.
I thought we're going to have a courthouse bill before gathering.
What, don't, nobody can, oh, you can do this one.
Now, now you see what Norma goes through all the time.
Ten thirty for the, for the contracts.
Yeah, for the interlocal. What do y'all want to make? Here, city hall?
Doesn't matter where we
What?
Yeah, we can meet here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll
Twenty-fourth and ten thirty?
Ten thirty.
No, twenty-fourth is out.
Right.
What's now?
No, they just
It's our meeting.
Oh, Army.
She's going to get the room back there for that meeting.
Who's on first?
So the twenty-fourth
July second at ten.
Six.
For the
Interlocal, yeah. Here?
That's fine unless y'all just want to meet.
Meet here?
You know, what I can't wait to see is
We'll switch each other back.
What time's coming out in the paper? Well, hopefully I'm not.
So you said, will you switch?
Okay, July.
Oh, I thought they were switching back the other way.
So interlocal, two o'clock here.
We've guarded up.
And I suggest to some copies of
You know, that's probably the best thing is swap copies. We get what y'all got, y'all got what we getting.
See if you can make
Well, this copy is
Okay.
We'll do here.
Okay, that's on the second.
Can you send us copies of everything you've got? I'm going to make sure we're all matched up at the same time.
Yeah.
All right. Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Love one.
Don't ask for a date.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four zero.
Okay, I need a motion for the council to
Remove.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Thank y'all.